I feel he deserves, we want to glorify him in all that he do. We thank you for every blessing, we thank you for the protection and you have given us a lot of wisdom and you share. And what we just pray that each, every family member, every law person, every public servant of the Brazos County will be blessed, will be, so here's a note, please stand up and then you will encourage us to follow you and do all that you can in our hands to do, let us do it for you and in the body and mind of Jesus.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the empire of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I pledge allegiance to Texas, I pledge allegiance to Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Second item on the agenda is to call for citizens' input and our concerns. Here then we'll consider to take action on agenda items three through twenty-three. Number three is presentation and approval of Art for Life project plan for the Brazos County Expo Complex.
Hello. I'm Amy, I'm not Chris, you may have noticed, um, yeah. Chris is actually in Scotland right now, so he's kind of sent me as his proxy. And our artists as well is in New Orleans, so I'm just here to, to basically present to you again, um, our artists and the kids have gone back and made the changes that y'all requested at the last meeting, um, and I've got updated copies.
I've given them one copy.
Okay, great. Um, and so they were able to go in and make the Leonard Road change and they made the, the change that Commissioner Aldrich suggested, the eighteen forty-one, um, in the call number there, so we are basically looking for approval to get started on the project. Right, and it will be done in that same impressionist fingerprint style that you can see on the mirror up there.
They did a good job last year, I expect this will be.
Yeah, there, I mean, Mike Penny, our artist, is really wonderful at leading those kids and they do a fantastic job, um, working together and creating such a big piece of work, so.
Question? Question mark, can you make a question?
Nancy.
Motion made, second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed. Motion carries, number six, his request for outstate travel for Lieutenant McCarron and Martinez to attend training in Las Vegas, Nevada, dates of travel are August ninth through thirteenth, twenty seventeen. Good approval?
Second.
Motion made, second, discussion. This is directing the tax assessor to collect an administrative fee before it gets split up between the, uh, entities. Uh, must have been made, second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, number five, is a request by outstate travel for six first district forecast to attend an annual meeting of the American Bar Association in New York, City of New York, states travel are August ninth through thirteenth, twenty seventeen. Good approval?
Second.
Motion made, second, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, number six, his request for outstate travel for Lieutenant McCarron and Martinez to attend training in Las Vegas, Nevada, dates of travel are August twenty-eighth through thirteenth, twenty seventeen. Second, motion made, second, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, number seven is acceptance of donate property of unclaimed clothing and mislaid property left by INS, Mesa Verde County. Motion made, second, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, number eight, mentalization of purchase order in the amount of one thousand five hundred forty-three dollars thirty-eight cents for janitorial supplies paid purchase order was closed before the invoice was paid.
What's your proposal?
Motion made, second, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Number nine is discuss and take possible action on contract renewal with Oasis County for residential juvenile services. Motion made, second, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, attend, discuss, take possible action on contract renewal with Mesa County for short-term and long-term juvenile residential services. Motion made, second, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Number eleven is approval permission to add type of bid RFP seventeen dash two eighty-five, county deposit. Second, motion made, second, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, number twelve, approval permission to add type of bid seventeen dash three oh one, extension of Mesa Verde. Second, motion made, second, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, number thirteen is approved contract eighteen dash zero four three with STL and Associates for appraisal. Motion made, second, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Number fourteen is acceptance of special warranty deed from Shannon Iverson and K.C. Iverson for point zero, point one seven zero acre of land to be used for improvements for Stausland Road located precinct one. Good approval?
Second.
Motion made, second, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, number fifteen is acceptance of special warranty deed from Winnie M. Fauer for point one nine three acre of land to be used for improvement for Stausland Road located precinct one. Good approval? Motion made, second, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, number sixteen is tax remand application for following.
Um, second.
Motion made, second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, number seventeen is budget amendments, budget amendments FY sixteen slash seventeen forty-four point one to forty-four point seven. Second, motion made, second, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, uh, number eighteen is presentation for, uh, proposed budget for fiscal year twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen. Uh, I guess you read, run it, okay? Proposed budget, don't you see highlights, part of the proposed budget, we're going.
Did you hear what you asked?
Uh, yes, that's okay. These are highlights that, that we go through, you'll see detail of each one of those, those are highlights in the, in this proposed budget, next slide. So the, the twenty sixteen appraised value is fourteen point four billion dollars, the seventeen appraised value is sixteen point one, uh, billion, so we've had an increase, a pretty good increase, I think like twelve, below twelve percent, uh, increase. Of that, seven hundred and fourteen million was not on last year's values, so it is new buildings that came on the, the roads. Uh, next slide. So the, the proposed budget, uh, or the current budget right now is two hundred and forty point six million, the proposed budget is two hundred and fifty-three million, uh, two hundred and fifty-three point four billion, so there's an increase of forty-eight point eight million here in the proposed budget. As we go through, we'll see what those are, uh, the.
You're fine, I'd be going.
Okay, all right, we'll see what those are, I mean, it looks like a.
Is it, is it like, is it the transfer from the fund that ends up?
Yeah, it's, yeah, I got that in here, that's what, there's, there's an explanation in here of why that looks like a huge increase, yeah, it's in here. So, here, here's kind of a breakdown of the budget summary, the general fund goes up about eight percent, uh, and health endowment's up about nineteen percent, the special revenue goes up twenty percent, and that, that special revenue is what Katie was talking about, it's the LPDF of the, um, does LPDF stand for?
Provider Participation Fund.
It's the hospital districts who actually, uh, provide the funds to Brazos County and they're sent up to be matched, uh, by the federal government, sent back to the local providers, uh, the hospitals. It actually brings in, and it's for un, it's for unpaid for, uh, healthcare, is, is, uh, for indigent healthcare, it's not compensated, so, uh, and it's, uh, it is a way for those hospitals to, uh, gain back some dollars that they lose, uh, for, for taking care of indigents. And, and the state came up with a way to get that done, to, to draw down Medicaid money, and the, the hospitals actually provide the money and it passes through the county, goes up and then goes to the hospitals, so it's passed through. That increase doesn't cost taxpayers of Brazos County anything, it's passed through, it's come from the hospitals, through Brazos County, goes up and then comes back down, so that's what, that's part of what this budget looks like, it's a huge increase, it's, but it's not from, uh, it's not from property taxes, it's from hospital money that, that starts out that way. Uh, then, uh, grant funds went down some, uh, the state's, uh, not, doesn't seem to be funding as many grants as they used to, and so those, that had to be adjusted down somewhat because of, uh, the grant funds going down. Debt service, we, we budgeted everything that's, all the money that is in, that sits in debt to be, to pay for debt, got budgeted this year, it may not, it won't get spent, it won't all get spent, but we just went ahead and budgeted everything there, it could get, it could pay some principal, it could do other things, but it's gotta go to debt, that's the only place it could go for, so it got budgeted into debt service. Capital projects went up a, a good bit, and that's really, this, this increase that we got in, um, for, for appraisals and for the, the new property, what we tried to do, I mean, we know we've got a number of projects coming on, like Arrington Road is gonna cost us, you know, to do the whole thing is probably four to five million dollars for that. Uh, there's, this Mesa Verde, we've got some money budgeted for it, but we needed additional money to try to get it done. There's, there's just a lot of projects out there that, that we, we can see in the horizon that are gonna have to happen, and so that's what we're trying to do, is put money in the budget to take care of those projects. And so that was where a good bit of that money got plugged into was capital projects, uh, to take care of those, those, um, capital projects that we know were gonna happen. So, uh, and then the proprietary fund is, is the health, um, that's, that's what, how we pay for our, whether it's the health insurance or the, to pay for all the things that happen, it went down and I'm not sure why, I maybe, we may need to take a, in the, in the.
Nine one one.
Now, uh, is that what caused it to go down a little bit?
A little bit, yeah.
Okay. And I think we're, we're pretty close.
And that clinic, we pulled the clinic out, the, the building.
Okay. So the clinic building came out and nine one one, and so that's what caused it to go down a little bit. Uh, and this is just an explanation of LPDF, the Local Provider Participation Fund, and it, this is at no cost to the county, increases our budget, we have to budget it to be able to send the money back, uh, up, but it's money that actually comes from the hospitals. Um, effective tax rate, which is the amount of, is the tax rate that would bring in the same amount of money that brought in last year, is point four five four two two five. Uh, the current tax rate is point four eight five, the effective is point four five four two two five, and the proposed rate is to leave the tax rate the same at point four eight five. Uh, here's kind of a breakdown, historical rates of the maintenance and operations and the debt portion, INS, and then the total rate, you can see the total rate has stayed the same since two thousand thirteen, uh, the, the debt and operations has, uh, switched back just a little bit, but it, M and O has kind of stayed close to the same, uh, not a whole lot of, lot of change in there. The total debt service is ninety million, two hundred and fifty-five thousand, four hundred dollars, that would be what it would take to pay off the debt over however long the debt is, uh, and during those years that it's there, it would take seventy-two million five, seven hundred and fifteen dollars in principal and seventeen million, five hundred forty, uh, in interest. This year, in, in eighteen, the, the requirement's gonna be nine million, nine hundred and forty thousand, three hundred and eighteen dollars to pay this year's, twenty eighteen's principal and interest payments, and that's a breakdown of the principal and interest. Personnel, here's the highlights, uh, we know that, uh, that last year we had to have a couple of emergency, uh, changes to the budget, uh, with the SRO officers and then with, uh, IT, and I believe we did that with, uh, purchasing. Uh, what we did this year, we stick two full-time and a part-time transition positions into, under county judge, because I don't know what may, with, with Odyssey and with the paperless and, uh, all that's happening, I'm not sure what it's gonna take to, uh, to get those, get all of that accomplished, some people think it'll take more positions than we've got, whether it's IT, or whether it's in the district clerk, county clerk, or whether it's, uh, in the courts. Uh, we've added a little bit to the, uh, the county clerk also, but, uh, I, there, it's an unknown, and because we can't, uh, make changes in, in the number of personnel, uh, unless it's an emergency situation, and, and there's really nobody that knows what it's gonna take to get all that accomplished, but it's gotta happen, I mean, the, the paperless deal is required by the state, uh, to happen on criminal, uh, I believe it's by July of eighteen, we're trying to get it accomplished by January, uh, and IT's been working hard to try to get that done, but there's a lot of things that hasn't happened for that all to have to actually get it done, and so, uh, and I, you know, nobody really knows what it's gonna, personnel-wise, what it'll take, so that's what those positions are. We added a position in, in IT because we felt like this one was gonna be a system analyst, uh, the, um, uh, trying to go paperless, we, we had one position that's working with the courts to, 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 uh, to implement Odyssey and to, uh, to get that, that interaction, whether it's with Odyssey and then another program that would, uh, to make, make it a seamless, uh, transition, we added that position, I'm not sure whether it'll take another one or not, Eric said that he has talked with other counties who've done some implementation, and it's taken as many as three to four, uh, my hope is that we don't have to plug those in, but that's, potentially, that's what one of those are positions that some county judge could have. Facility services, we added a general maintenance tech principally for, uh, painting, uh, we, these buildings, although it seems like only yesterday that we purchased this and remodeled and, and moved in, uh, we've got buildings all over that need touch-up paint and re, re, uh, dressed up a little all the time, and, uh, maintenance, uh, just didn't have personnel to keep somebody working on that kind of stuff, and so we put a position in there to try to take care of that. The, the district attorney, last year Jarvis came to us and said that he's had three deputy district attorneys in each one of the district courts. He came to us, I, I mean, we've always had, we've got lots of folks in jail, and it just keeps rising, and, you know, one of the things that, I think it's Sixth Amendment that requires us to, for, to have a speedy trial, and there's folks that sit over there that, that we don't want sitting there, number one, it's costing us money, and, and number two, they deserve a speedy trial, and so Jarvis came to us last year and said that he, he thought maybe that if we added a fourth prosecutor to the district court, that he could, he could then have a pair of prosecutors, two pair of prosecutors that would work on criminal cases, and they could have more cases prepared, uh, for trial on any certain day, and then when, when they do a jury pool and come in to, for jury, then, then you work down that list of people, and if they plea out, then, you know, whatever it is they do, but, uh, before, when they were just had three, they couldn't work up a lot enough trial, uh, had to be prepared for trials, but with two pair, they can prepare for more trials and be, uh, be more efficient about getting people through the system and having their trial completed. Uh, it's, he's been successful, we added one last year in two seventy-second, uh, it, it, he's been successful in getting more trials done there, so we added two more this year in this budget to take care of the other two district courts, and we hopeful that those will be just as successful, and we can hopefully move more people, uh, either get them, uh, finished with the, uh, either they, they're guilty or they're innocent, and if they're guilty, then they need to be in, in TDC, not sitting in our judge. County clerk, we added another position, uh, there seems to be, uh, a demand for, and I've had both county courts at law for, uh, the probate and guardianship, that they're, they're apparently gonna be wanting to have a dis, a county clerk, uh, when they're having probate and guardianship, uh, hearings, to have them in court, uh, doing more of the, the work that's, I guess, has been typically been done by county courts at law, but, uh, that's, we added a position for, for that, uh, the, um, under county court at law one and county court at law two, there's a position, we added a part-time position, twenty, more or less twenty hours, it's a professional, uh, physician, but we, we put that in last year, uh, to try to help with guardianship backlog, uh, I mean, guardianship is kind, is a, is word, uh, judges, I, it's the only place I know that judges have, uh, personal and, uh, they're not immune from, from a lawsuit, sued in, uh, in, uh, guardianship, if they make a mistake, they can be sued personally, and so we, so it's an issue we've tried to cover with insurance just in case, but, uh, you know, a guardian can, can be a young child and then maybe need a guardian for fifty or seventy years, and so those cases just don't go away like, you know, in a year or two years, they can be around for a long time, and there were a lot of cases out there that need to be, uh, looked at, and our county courts, but they run a pretty tight shift and they run lots of cases, and so, uh, we felt like, uh, Judge Maskey came to me and felt like that it, this would be a, a way to try to improve the efficiency of, of the guardianship and probate, and so we, we put that position in, this year we're making it a full-time position, there's enough work, uh, I think that will certainly keep that person busy, and one of the things they have to do is to, um, have to check on those, uh, guard, those, the folks, the guardians and the, the, the person that's, uh, the ward, they have to check on them, uh, and that's part of statute that they should be doing, so that's, that'll be one of the things that they're doing. Uh, the jail, we added five detention officers, we've been consistently running, uh, from six fifty to seven hundred, uh, in the jail, uh, we delayed for several years trying to add on more, uh, positions because, uh, positions are our, employees are our biggest cost to the county, uh, and you try not to add any that you don't think you have to have, but at this point, the jail has got, uh, enough inmates that it just, it just makes sense that the time to, to add them is this year, so we're adding five positions to detention. Uh, there's one more resource officer that's being added for, uh, College Station, it's in the school district, that is funded by College Station, so if that one would be no cost to the county, but there's not, that position was added in for, I believe, part of the year for a school that's gonna be built, or maybe they're in the process of building and gonna be completed, so that's what that position. Juvenile, we added a full-time detention officer and two part-time detention officers. Uh, what, what you don't see there with that, uh, while, while those added to the budget, last year we added seven positions to juvenile, we only funded them for one month because this pre-act, the permission of right, uh, I don't remember what the rest of it is acronym, but, uh, we, we, we only funded those seven positions for one month because it, it actually goes into effect, I think it's, is it October first or September?
October first.
So we, we funded them last year for a month, so, but this year, those seven positions have to be funded for twelve months, so while it didn't show up as really numbers adding, uh, the dollars are, are added to the budget. Um, so, and then in Roden Bridge, we added part-time GIS that, that got eliminated last year, shouldn't have been, it was, uh, we overlooked that, and so we put that back in because there's, there's some GIS things that are relaxing that need to be done, uh, and then a light equipment operator and a flagger. Uh, there was a total of, of thirty-nine positions added, there were twenty deleted, so there's nineteen net positions that were created, uh, in twenty eighteen, there's a, there's a net increase of twenty-seven positions from, uh, from October one of last year to October one of this year, and that is because during the year we added the SRO officers, we added, uh, the, uh, purchasing and, um, IT, IT, so those, that's why the, that there's numbers, that those two numbers don't just, uh, go together, so we added, we plugged in three percent quota for, for the staff, and then, and a salary adjustment of one percent, uh, to each department for, uh, an adjustments pool that would be distributed at the discretion of the elected official department. Um, for the retirement contribution, we, uh, last year we, we were required to put in thirteen point eight four percent, we actually put in fourteen percent, and we act, well, last year we actually put a million dollars, I believe, into, the last two years, I believe, into the tax retirement. Uh, we were funded at eighty-two percent, eighty-two point two percent last year, uh, this year we, we're, the, our ratio has increased, which is a good thing, that's what we're looking for, we wanna, we wanna get that ratio up, I'd like to see it up even higher, but we're up to about eighty-five point three percent funded, and we were, we would be required to put in fourteen point fourteen to remain level, we're actually gonna fund it at fourteen point twenty-five, my hope would be that that might bump up a little bit more next year, if the stock market doesn't crash, and lots of other issues that, that, you know, that could impact, uh, that, uh, what our funding ratio is, but, uh, that's, that's, that's why we wanna fund it more than what we were required to fund. Um, health insurance, uh, so, uh, contribution, I mean, everybody, I, all you have to do is look around and read what's going on with health costs, uh, they're going up, we're self-funded, our health cost, uh, but they go up too, I mean, uh, so, what, what happened this year is that the contribution is, uh, is going up by seven point one percent from eleven thou, this is what it costs the county to fund for each employee, eleven thousand seven hundred and twelve, this year, it will, next year we'll have to fund twelve thousand four hundred and ninety-two per position, uh, that's a seven hundred and eighty dollar, uh, cost, uh, for full-time position, there's eight hundred and twenty-two positions, so that's a total of, if you multiply that times the, the twelve thousand four hundred and ninety-two, that's ten million and two hundred and sixty-eight dollars and four hundred 10 million and $268 and $424. The county's taken a big portion of that, but the employee's gonna need to pick up some too. So the employee premium is proposed to increase beginning January of 2018. So the increase range from 6 to 7% has been on coverage selected, whether you're employee only or whether you've got kids or whether you've got the whole family. And then we also plugged a million dollars into the OPEB program, which is to cover, that's a coverage for employees who are retiring, for health, to get this health insurance when they retire. Now they have to pay for it if they retire and they wanna remain on the health insurance. The county employee has to pay for it. That's why I'm told that this thing keeps climbing is that we're, they can still remain on it. It's not paid for by the county anymore. I mean, if your grandfathered in, and we stopped it a few years ago, if your grandfathered in, then it still would do it because that was a rule that was set under good many years ago. But we plugged in another million dollars into OPEB to try to cover that liability, future liability. And so that's where we put a million there. Here's what, here's, these are pretty important for employees. The yearly cost for Brazos County for an employee only is $780. And the employee cost, if you don't do the wellness program, will go to $288. If you do the wellness program, which is a physical and you have to get, I mean, there's a farm out there that you need to take to your doctor and maybe some blood work, but if you do this physical, it'll cost you $48 instead of $288. There's a discount and the county is encouraging that along with using the health clinic that will be open in October. But what's important about this is that that's required to be done by, is it September 1st? September 1st. So you need to have your physical done before September the 1st or you'll be paying, if you're employee only, you'll be paying that $288 instead of $48. So the discount is if you get a physical and have it, no, a physical is included, I believe, in your, in your health insurance. I mean, so it doesn't cost anything to go get a physical. But it will be fairly expensive if you don't because the discount is if you go get it. So if you're department head and in here, you need to tell your employees, go get a physical taken because your health insurance will go up significantly if you don't. So, and then those are the cost of an employee and a child that goes, and that's the same thing. That child or spouse needs to have the physical done too to get the discount.
I don't think the child would have to. Only the employee and the spouse need to get the physical done. Children do not.
The child does not have to get?
Child does not have to have the physical. If you have employee spouse or employee family covered, both employees and spouse have to get the physical done and turn in the forms in to try help. If you do the physical, but you don't turn in the form, you won't get the discount. The only way to get the discount is to get the physical done and turn the forms in and try help.
Right. Yeah, I found that out. I got my physical last November or something and it didn't take the form in. So I gotta, I gotta get mine done. So, yeah. So the child doesn't have to get it, but spouse does. Very important, very important. It will cost, it's the price of not getting it is fairly expensive and could go up even more next year. So get your physical, if you're, if you go on county insurance, you wanna get a physical. It'll save you some money. And there's the deadline and human resources. Dental insurance, we have it, but the county never has provided it. The county, the employee pays for it. If you want dental insurance, it's there, but the county doesn't provide it. And this is one thing that we looked at too, long-term, our employees that stay a long time, we provided longevity for a long time. But we thought we'd take a look at longevity and see if we couldn't increase it some. If an employee's been here, we'd like to have good employees, we want them to stay. So what we did was, in the proposed budget is to, currently, if you've been here five to nine years, you get $240. We're upping it to $300. And you can go right down the list, 10 to 14, currently is $480, it would go to $600. And what we did, started doing, I don't remember, three or four, two or three years ago, I don't remember, we lumped it out. We do a lump payment now instead of doing it monthly and you get, in October, I think? Is that correct?
November.
November?
First, second of November.
Okay. We just go ahead and pay the lump payment. If you're here and you're working and you have, your anniversary date is?
Whoever's here and working, September 13.
September?
Yes.
Then you get, if you've been there in whatever that number of years, if you've been here, then you'll get an increase in your longevity. Here's the capital portion of the budget. Here's a, here's a highlight of where those things are being plugged in. We know that election equipment, we went ahead and plugged in two and a half million into election equipment. We know it's coming up. We know it's gonna, that's gonna happen. A lot of our machines are, I guess it's been like close to 10 years? Has it been?
2003.
Eight?
2003 was 4000.
2003. Wow. And anybody that's, with a few computers knows that the life runs out on them and, you know, they change. So, I mean, we're being told that that's probably gonna have to be changed out over the next couple of years. So we plugged in, that probably won't cover everything, I don't know, but we're, you know, we're trying to make sure that we've got enough money to make.
Huge down payment on it. We plugged in two and a half million there.
We did surveillance refresh because that's kind of the same sort of thing. It's a totally different subject, but it's the surveillance cameras and all are not up to date and they tell us that they, I mean, some of them may be still on VCRs. But anyway, that's an upgrade there. The jail video surveillance upgrade, that would actually be probably 445,000. The jail has offered to pay for up to half, up to 200,000. So we only budgeted the county side because the commissary fund would be what would pay for the other portion of it. And I think, but I think the cost is really like, something like 445,000 on that jail videos upgrade. But we budgeted the county side up to try to get that taken care of too. Financial software, we're, I mean, it's pretty old too and I know we'll be looking at either upgrading or new or something. And so we don't wanna deal with that until we can get this justice software behind us. And I think IT would probably, they'd probably all jump off the building over there if we got into another. They might get up here on this building though. But, and then there's generator installation out at Brazos Center. Roads, we plugged in 9.2 million. I mean, we've got a lot of projects, that won't all get spent certainly this year, but we've got projects that we know have gotta happen. And it's better to plug them in now with what's going on in the legislature. Who knows whether there may not be any excess money anymore. I'm just, you know, I'm amazed that we have legislators that wanna blame cities and counties for the problem with property taxes when school districts are, if you look at your bill, you'll see that school districts are where the major cost for property taxes and it's because the state's lack of funding for school districts. And they've forced local schools to raise their property taxes to balance their budget. And, you know, even in Senate Bill 1 this year, they require that schools have to go up nearly 14% over the next two years. And then they wanna tell counties and cities that we're not taking care of business. But we know we've got lots of, we're a growing community, we're a growing county and we've got lots of needs and we can stick our head in the sand and do nothing about it or we try to take care of them and hopefully look in the future and try to plug in money that will take care of some of those things. So there's a six-yard dump for Roden Bridge and a 14-yard truck and equipment, 147, 840. We plugged in 2.7 billion for J.K. Constable precinct 1. Court House still in Canyon over there, 1.7 billion over there. Equipment other was 500,000. That's various things in there, exposition, complex expansion, 1.7. And then we're moving forward with juvenile expansion and we plugged in 20 million. And hopefully we can, you know, that will work. We're still moving forward on that process. Replacement vehicles, sheriff, we put seven vehicles in there, two in the jail, one in Constable precinct 1 and one in Constable precinct 2. And I think we are leaning toward the Explorer. I know there was some bad publicity pop up in the last few days about carbon monoxide. I think most folks kinda believe it's aftermarket addition, some things that are added to it that may be causing the leaks. You know, we may have to plug in some monitors in there to make sure that it's not, but I mean, it really does better vehicle than what we've been using. So that's the direction we're leaning. They do cost more money, but it's, you know, it just doesn't seem like the charges are holding up as well. And that's what our fleet maintenance director tells us, that they seem to begin to have problems a lot earlier in life than what we would have hoped. So we can't get anywhere near as many years out of them. Anyway, this proposed budget, we'll get it online. It's not there yet. They're still trying to finish up some things, but they'll get it online. And I don't, we don't have them ready to hand out yet. Do you have, okay. Y'all must've worked some this weekend.
Yeah.
Okay. If there's any questions, I'll take the questions. Invite the public to, pop the next one up, Ken. This is, we'll have a public hearing Tuesday, August 22nd at 1:30.
That's for the county.
And then August 22nd at 1:45, August 29th at 6:00 PM are the public hearings for tax increase. And then adoption of the budget would be September 5th, Tuesday at 10:00 AM. We'll set the tax rate Tuesday, September 5th at 10:00 AM.
Yeah. Kevin Boach on the desk.
Yeah.
That's what we planned.
Yeah. All right. I don't know if anybody's got any questions right now. If there's any questions, we'll take them right now. If not, we'll move on down to number 18. No, we did it. Oh, yeah, we did. Number 19 is establish date and time for public hearing on a proposed budget for fiscal year 2017, 2018. And I think we need to.
I think it's August. It should be August 22nd at 1:30 for the budget.
Okay, so it's August, Tuesday, August 22nd at 1:30.
I'm sorry.
Motion made.
Nancy. Can I say?
Discussion. All the folks say aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Number 20 is proposed to increase tax revenues and the proposal for tax rate of 1,485 for $100 valuation for 2017 tax year effective increase in tax revenue. Motion made second discussion. All the folks say aye. Opposed. Motion carries. And number 21 is establish date times two public hearings for tax revenue increase.
President-elect approval. The first public hearing sets for Tuesday, August 22nd, 2017, at 1:45 PM. And the commissioners' court of Brazos County Administration Bill, the second public hearing, we set for Tuesday, August 29th, 2017, at 6:00 PM. Inter commissioners' court of Brazos County Administration Bill.
Motion made second discussion. All the folks say aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Number 22 is personnel change status.
President-elect approval.
Motion made second discussion. All the folks say aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Number 23 is claim to claims, claim paid by Brazos County, claim number 71579743, claim number 7158143. Motion made second discussion. All the folks say aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Number 24 is knowledgeable investment report for quarter end, 6:30, 17. Number 25, sure should report on inmate population. Chief.
Justice, Mr. Warren, our max population in the last 24 hours is 669, 92 of our females. 31 have been unidentified or electronic monitoring, 12 are listed.
Thank you, chief. Number 26 is announcement of interest items and possible future agenda topics. Number 27 is office system input and office service. Please, Attorney. Thank you, Attorney.